We're so technologically savvy here. I think we're now on, so good evening, everyone, particularly those people at home who have been so patient today to await our start of the meeting. As you can maybe see, we have a bit of a problem here. We have three members in attendance in a, that's fine for a quorum, but it's not fine for a vote, any substantive vote. So this evening, what we're going to do is give each petitioner the option to either present tonight and then have a vote from the three members present with a subsequent vote by either a member or an alternate after certifying they've reviewed the tapes. So with that, let's see if we can get started. Before we go to the agenda items, we have a presentation concerning our rules and regulations by our town planning. Why don't you go right ahead and tell us all about it?
Hi, Kathy Williams, town planner. We had looked at some drafts at the meeting a month ago with regard to the rules and regulations, and you guys had a couple of questions and comments which have been incorporated into a draft that should be in your packets dated April 21, 2022. I did coordinate with town council to get a little bit more information again on that question with regard to quorum. He indicated that quorum is always three, however, the quantum, or the number of votes needed to act, is three for comprehensive permit and four for other appeals, special permits and variances. And he did indicate that the Mullen rule would apply if you started a hearing with only three members and then the fourth member reviewed the tape. And the attached document that you have there has a modification to quorum and voting that specifically identifies its quorum as three and then what the voting requirements are for comprehensive and the others. We also corrected the wording with regard to 4.2 appearance to include opponent.
Ask a question, Kathy. Supermajority, what is that? Is that?
Supermajority for you guys are four out of five.
Four out of five? What would it be out of four? Is it three out of four? No? Has to be four out of five.
Typically, boards are five or seven for that particular reason, like the planning board, supermajority would be five of the seven.
Okay. But if we only have four people here, is three adequate?
If you only, if you had four people for voting, it would need to be unanimous.
Thank you. Yeah, that's by statute. I want to ask you about Article 5, subparagraph F. You see where I'm referring to the chairman?
Yeah.
A chairperson? I like that new to agenda neutral term, chairperson. Was that changed because of my lack of reading in the full, the full text at times?
I think it was simply meant to simplify. I think the last sentence there basically says that you're not going to read the whole thing, but it may be summarized. So instead of having that extra sentence, it just says, "The chairperson shall read or cause to be read summarized or simply referenced."
That's wonderful. As you know, from time to time, some pro se people appearing before the board like to send us volumes, and it's hard to read those into the record. So that's wonderful that that change has been made or at least contemplated. So are there any questions of our town planner who has always, as always, does a wonderful job for us?
Well, the only questions I had have been answered, so I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Martin?
I'm fine.
And how about anybody in our audience? Do you want to ask any questions of our planner on these changes to the rules and regulations, as to how we operate?
May I ask a question?
Are seeing people at home? Are those people on Zoom?
Yes. But it doesn't look like they are, have their hands up.
Okay.
And waiting to speak, so.
Okay. Well, if they do have an interest in chiming in on these, please raise your hand so our board administrator can welcome you into our meeting. There being none, we now, just, yeah, you were raising your hand. This isn't elementary school.
I don't know whether you have to wait to vote until after you have your next meeting and Sean has signed the document and you vote together. I've always done it that way. I don't know whether, I've never seen it vote separately and then again.
No, because three of, the three of us here are regular members. We can vote this evening and then whoever is an alternate or a regular member, depending if it's Sean or one of the alternates, it won't be the new regular member, but they will vote as well, but at our next meeting, they'll announce their vote at the next meeting. That's just because Mr. Frapery may go away on a river cruise or Mr. Martin may go, may stay in Florida a little longer than anticipated. So with that, we've read these, we've considered them twice, we've seen them, they all seem to make logic, logical sense to me, makes the role of our board a little bit easier to navigate. So, Mr. Martin, your thoughts? Yay or nay?
I would agree. I don't see anything in there that I have questions with and that doesn't appear to be appropriate and a good idea.
And that's a yay or then?
You want a motion?
Yeah, sure. Oh, I mean, we're voting it up or down. It's just that simple.
I'll move to, to accept, is accept the right word? What do you want?
Sure, approve, accept.
Accept the new rules and regulations. The zoning board of appeals.
I'll second it. I mean, I like the new section too. Consulting fees is a good thing, so.
Where's your nameplate? Geez, that's so unfair. You know, we got to get credits at the end of this, you know? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you're a real person, Jay.
I was going anonymous this week. Anyway, I second.
So there's a motion and it's been seconded. Let's take a roll call vote, please, Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung is an aye. That is a three to no vote, three to aught. We cannot accept that as a final vote until we have another member or alternate chime in as well, okay? And that will be done in the open meeting, our next meeting here. You do not need to return to attend that.
Awesome.
You've done such a good job presenting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Your tireless work on behalf of this town is appreciated. All right. So now we open it up to the regular board meeting and we get a little more serious here if we can. This is the regular board meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, this May 12, 2022. We have four matters on our agenda, but before we begin, because I do see some at-home interest in this meeting. My name is Steve DeYoung. I'm the chairman of this board, until I'm voted out perhaps this evening. We will convene the February 24, I'm sorry, the May 12 meeting at this time. As required by General Law Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, known as an Act Relative to Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency. The public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. So that members of the public may watch the meeting on Channel 18 or watch or participate in the meeting via Zoom. The meeting notice provides necessary instructions on how to participate via Zoom. Please note that audio, video, and screen sharing functions will be disabled for all attendees. In order to participate in the meeting in any way, you're going to need to raise your hand electronically so that we can identify you and invite you into the meeting. We have three members this evening. We recognize that that is not a constituted board, and I'll get to that in just a moment. But the three members this evening are Mr. Martin, Mr. Frapery, and myself, Mr. DeYoung. Now, each petitioner is welcome to say that they would like to reschedule this, because as you can see, while we have three members, we don't have enough to vote pursuant to the statute. So my thought is that instead of having particularly people that have traveled here from Rhode Island back here, you know, we could proceed and then ask that a, our fourth member, Mr. Igo R., one of our alternates, watched the film, certify that they've watched the film, and announce their vote at the next meeting on each petition in order. So that would be the first agenda item to occur. None of the petitioners would need to return for that. Okay? So with that being said, we're going to go somewhat out of order as the, as people at home may be aware of. Oh, and by, by the way, I want to say one other thing. Today I was at a gas pump and a lovely young woman noted, said to me, "Mr. DeYoung, how do you know me?" She said, "Well, I watched the meetings with regularity." I said, "Well, you know, I guess we do have a fan base." I just want to say you made my day, madam, and good to talk really. Petition 4953 is that of Henry E. Cassidy Jr. and Gail Cassidy, trustees of the Henry E. Cassidy Jr. Trust and Gail Cassidy Trust of 161 Springer Lane, West Jonathan, Mass, that property being in an R-25 zoning district. Our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 104.3.2, subparagraph two of our zoning bylaws, and is allowed to add a second floor to an existing one-story dwelling, a portion of which is to be located in the side setback. Good evening. Would you identify yourself, please, sir?
Yes, my name is Paul Tardif. I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port, and I represent the petitioners. And as you indicated, we're seeking a special permit to add a second floor to a structure. Let me give you some facts so you'll have those. And by the way, we do want to proceed with the method that you provided, yes.
That's what I kind of figured when you started talking.
Kind of thought that. First of all, the property is in the R-25 zoning district and is currently approved of a one-story, single-family structure with three bedrooms, constructed in approximately 1978 is what the field card says. This is a corner lot on the corner of Rainbow Road and Springer Lane. And combined, they have about 279 feet of frontage on those roads. Property has about 19,700 square feet. The existing house complies with both front yard setbacks, both 30-foot setbacks off those streets, and also on the northerly side setback. But there, but the structure does encroach into the westerly side setback by about two and a half feet. Existing building coverage is 13.1% and of this house, approximately 90 square feet total encroaching to that side setback. The proposal is to leave that current structure in place but add a second story directly on top, add some small additional footprint. The additional footprint is going to comply with all the setbacks. That's not even considered tonight because it's not part of the setback that we're talking about. But this special permit is to request that, a special permit to allow for the second story, because it is sitting in a setback and we're going up a story and increasing the height according to 104.3.2.1. That is not a, that is not something that can be done by right, and we need a special permit for it. The new living space above will not be any closer to the side boundary than is the existing structure. If you look at the elevations, the house was designed to have just two windows on that second floor, the entire second floor facing that owner, and those are both in a bedroom. So there'll be, it's really not the kind of situation where someone's going to be looking into their yard and invading their privacy in any way. Building coverage is going to increase slightly to 16.6%, still well under the 25% required, and the structure will be 30.4 feet above grade at the street. And the street, grade as street is 13 feet. That is on the plan. We're going to go 30.4 up to there. That does not include the cupola or the chimneys, which are really not part of the height calculation. Under 104.3.2, this board can issue a special permit if it finds that what we're planning is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there now. Again, we're not getting any closer. I know we're not pulling it back, but we are reusing the house that's there, and that's, that sort of necessitates using that as our foundation, if you will, for the second floor. It's going to be a beautiful home. You can see the plans. If you've been through the neighborhood, you know that the days of single family, single story dwellings are, are pretty much leaving. We have a lot of second stories down here. This is near the water. There's beach access for this property, and this is really going to be more of a family compound for the Cassidys. And so they currently live in Yarmouth. They bought this property and they're moving and staying in Yarmouth. That's the kind of people we like. So I don't think it's more detrimental, certainly not substantially more detrimental. So I think that based on that, we meet the criteria for a special permit. If you have questions, I'll be, I'll be happy to answer them for you. Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I would just concur with the petitioner. I, I think it meets all the, all the criteria. The house is a beautiful house and wonderful neighborhood and, you know, we're not encroaching any further than what's already there. It's just because it's a second story going on and it's only a, only a couple of feet that's being looked for anyways. So I don't see that this wouldn't be anything but an attribute to the neighborhood and to the site. I have no issues whatsoever with it.
Mr. Frapery?
What did you say the height was without the cupola?
30.2.
30.2? I didn't see it on here.
It's on a nice sheet, A4. Yeah, it's.
Oh, okay. It's using the basically the same foundation. It's not changing the foundation. It's just building up the current, the current structure. And I guess the only, have they gotten any feedback from the neighbor on the left?
I asked today, I spoke with Mr. Cassidy. He said that that, that neighbor is not here often and had not really heard or seen anyone there. And so we hadn't heard one way or the other, and I don't think the board received any feedback either. I'm not sure, but.
It's a beautiful house and there's other houses that have been done in the neighborhood, so it's consistent. Looks like several of them have already been upgraded like this, so it's very nice. My only concern was, was that, like I said, the left side of it, you know, it's pretty close to the other house and, but, you know, other than that, I think it's a beautiful, beautiful job and doesn't inflict upon any additional encumbrances, so I'm good when it comes to that.
Thank you.
So if you would, please remind me, what is the rule concerning a cupola?
Cupolas are not part of the calculation under 203.4.1.
What's the height at, with, at the cupola's peak?
It is 35 exact.
Yeah, because the only reason I'm asking is because I have up here a legend saying max height 48 feet, zero inches. I don't know what that's about.
At street level, we are at. What did we say, 13 feet?
13.
13, so, yeah.
That's probably what that led.
Yeah, and you know, the other thing is we just don't, as long as we keep it under 35, I think that's been the board's position, is that as long as it's staying under 35 feet measured by the billing department, that we're good.
It's a wonderful, wonderful rendering. I do know that there is a shower on A5. It references a shower. And I had thought, I'm not trying to be a wise guy here, I had thought that we could have rinsing stations, but no outdoor showers.
I'm seeing it, but I don't see a label on it. Am I missing it? Is it on the, on the site?
It points to it down on the bottom, outdoor shower enclosure. I'm sure they meant rinsing station, right?
Yeah, I think it was to rinse.
So maybe that legend could be changed, because we don't want to be in the business of approving showers.
We wouldn't even ask.
Very concerned for groundwater, as you remember.
Yep, we will take care of that.
You had another question, did you, Mr. Frapery?
Yeah, so the, the thing that you're talking about for the cupola, I think it's like with the 204, it came up on something else, 203.4?
Right.
Height limitations don't apply to chimneys, fires, cupolas. That's what you're referring to?
Correct. It's the last sentence of 203.4.1.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
I always like him to do his homework, you know, so he can keep us abreast of all the changes that we somehow get.
Mr. Chairman, I just talked to Sean, who just plain forget, and he is going to try and zoom in if we want to get a fourth vote.
Oh gee, that'd be great. Then we could, let's, let's see if we can do that, and you can perhaps give us a shortened.
Yeah. Don went to send him the link.
Were you referring to A.1 instead of 8.5? Because I'm seeing it there, but I'm not seeing it on A5.
A5. Right on the side.
The elevations?
It's just a legend. It just says, outdoor shower enclosure.
Outdoor showers are definitely no-nos now?
If you'd like to come up, I'll show you.
Oh, right here, yeah. So they're no-nos? I don't know. Is that right?
So outdoor shower enclosure is there, pointing to this structure, and it's on sheet A5. Well, it's a board health issue. It's supposed to be a rinsing station, the concern being that we're putting soap into the groundwater. So if you, if you leave it open to the, to the outside, you can't take your bathing suit off and stand there naked. Of course, I can, because our backyard is surrounded by trees. So unless you, if you want to come over and look, please feel free.
Would that apply if it's in now?
Sorry?
Does it apply if it's there now?
I don't know the answer to that. I know that I wrote mine down at my wife's request. She wasn't liking looking at it. I've got some great cedar wood in my, behind my shed, if anybody's. So are we making progress with Mr. Igo, I wonder?
Don had to get him, send him the link.
All right. So I'd ask everybody at home to be patient, everybody in our audience to be patient, because it would make it much more beneficial to all if we had a constituted board this evening. And to those people who have traveled so far from Rhode Island, we certainly apologize. We here in Massachusetts like to, like people in Rhode Island. I'm not sure people in Rhode Island like people in Massachusetts. So again, to those people at home, if we have Mr. Igo join us, we have at the end of our agenda, of the long-awaited election of offices, four regular members will be in attendance. We can proceed with that at the end, if anybody's interested in watching, and if anybody would like to wage a campaign for chairman, please feel free to do it. I'm, I'm okay to step back.
May not.
How loud?
It's, it's kind of like the, it's kind of like the Marines, you know? You line up and you say, who's going to volunteer? And one, one fool stands exactly in line, and the other, all the others back up a step. And he's the, he's the one that volunteers, you know? I'll tell you what, let's take a five-minute recess, okay?
Good.
We're going to break for five minutes, okay? Oh, you did? All right, let's wait till he comes in.
We might need a couple of minutes yet.
You're getting there.
Is he where he is?
Might be home.
I guess he's at home, yeah. Yeah, he's not in Florida.
How you feeling? Good?
I feel fine. I never had, never felt, not fine.
We told him afterwards.
I guess I wish I'd stayed out of the hospital.
Yeah. Yeah. I waited a day from when I was having my heart attack, and I don't think I helped myself at all. Just to tell me I was a fool. How accepted?
Well, they told me the same thing, and I said, "Well, it wasn't much different than what I thought was my hiatal hernia causing me problems."
I don't know if we're broadcasting at this point, but if anybody's listening. What did he say?
I think he said we are.
So if everybody at home, we're not just trying to waste your time, we're just hoping to get the fourth member to join us via Zoom so that we can substantively act on the four petitions before us this evening. And if he doesn't join us soon, we need to move along, at least to the next petition, and we can do as we suggested with respect to yours. So why don't we do that? All right? Would that be okay? So is any, does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the lectern and let's be heard, seeing none. Does anybody wish to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, come to the microphone. Let's be heard, and seeing none. Does anybody in our digital audience care to speak either in favor or against this petition? If so, use the raise the hand function on your computer and let us know you want to talk. Oh, end up. Now we have to wait for our board secretary to return so that she can invite you in, so please be patient. I can't read names from here.
Tom Hughes.
Tom Hughes. To the right. Yeah, I just saw the flash go up. Oh, there's the name. There, I haven't seen, I missed that. I apologize. Mr. Hughes, if you'd just be patient, we'd love to hear what you have to say. Didn't we consider this before?
Yeah, he's, he's in right now, so he can talk whenever he wants.
Oh, he can talk now? Okay, Mr. Hughes, please go right ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Great, thanks. Just quickly, I'm a resident of Springer Lane 178, and I am in complete support of this project. So I just want to, I just wanted to say that and hope it passes. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Hughes, before you run, I just want to say thank you for doing, getting involved in the civics of our day. Too many people don't get involved in government, and it's so nice to see somebody would say something, whether it's in favor or against. So we thank you very much for your participation, okay?
Yep, thank you.
You know, government's a wonderful thing.
I think I have another update.
I'm sorry?
I'm afraid I have another update, just that Sean's phone is at about 5% power.
Okay.
He doesn't think he's going to be able to zoom in after all, and he's nowhere where he can recharge it, so won't, that's not going to work.
Well, I'm sure he's dealing with very important business and know how hard it is to be a lawyer these days. So with that, we then close it to the public input on this particular, this is a different night, I'm telling you.
What a night. Is it a full moon?
Is, is, is there a Celtics game on or something? So, you know, this is a, an opportunity for the three of us to vote, consider the merits. We've closed it to the public input. Mr. Hughes was very kind in his commentary. And so we're going to proceed with the vote of three by roll call, and then we're going to have the fourth member who certifies that they have watched these petitions vote at the next meeting, okay?
Do we have, do we have to continue this until the next meeting?
Yes, I, I don't think you need to appear and re.
No, I understand, but I think that's how we keep it open for the vote, right?
Yes. But it's next meeting, so that, I don't want to have to sign continuation agreements here, you know? I just want to put it on the next meeting for these four matters. And it's very simple, just read off the petition number and the, whatever member is going to be voting can state their yea or nay. But in keeping with the governor's dictates, we're going to do it by roll call this evening. Mr. Martin, concerning, oh, somebody's got to make a motion, please, about the special permit.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit as presented.
No conditions.
And I will second it.
All right. And so you're taking notes, and I will see a draft decision, of course, yeah. And we're going to go back to you, Mr. Martin, on that motion. Do you care to have any discussion before proceeding onto a vote?
No, no discussion.
How about you, Mr. Frapery?
No, I think it fits in very well.
Yep, I agree wholeheartedly, and so let's have your vote there, Mr. Martin, please.
My vote is aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
And Mr. DeYoung, aye, and we'll have our fourth vote at some point in the future. Hopefully, it will be an aye, and that will signal that the petition has been granted.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Thank you to the board, and also thank you to Mr. Dolan for allowing me to jump in front. Appreciate that very much.
Well, we're going to do that, we're going to do the same for Henry S. Ma at 47 McNamara Ave in West Jonathan, Mass. That property is in a zoning district, R-40. You can come right up to the table, sure. Our applicant this evening seeks a special permit and/or a variance pursuant to 104.3.2, subparagraph two, and 203.5 of our zoning bylaws to add a 16-foot by 20-foot deck in the front setback to a pre-existing, non-conforming structure. Good evening.
Good evening.
Are you Mr. Martin?
I am.
Okay, that's great. It's always nice to know the, know the name of the face in front of you. Well, why don't you proceed right to tell us about your petition, please?
Okay. We have McNamara Road in the front of the property and Hastings Ave in the rear of the property. So essentially have two front properties. Uh, we started to explore putting a 16 by 20 foot deck and went for the building permit and we're told we weren't within the 30 foot setback. There's a site plan, I think included in the package that shows the, um, where it's located on the property. To if your back is to the garage wall, the left side, um, where I have a, a neighbor is blocked by an existing, um, room. The side facing, which would be east, I guess, with the back toward the garage facing straight ahead. Um, there's a six foot high fence between us and the road and the neighbors across the street. And I don't have anybody on the right hand side and obviously the garage behind us. So we're not really looking in on anybody. Talked to neighbors around us. They were all okay with it. It's about four feet off the ground, so I don't think we're going to do anything for, have to put any kind of barrier other than the, the railings. I wish I could make it more complicated, but it's-
Straightforward.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. You know, I, I hate to keep picking on Mr. Martin, but we're going to start down there and then we'll come up, but that's the only way I can remember to do these things. So Mr. Martin, any questions of our petition?
Uh, yeah, I don't have any questions. It looks like they're a fairly reasonable request. Certainly if there's any lot that, um, meets our criteria of being unusually shaped or shaping. Is one of the factors that we have to look at and you really don't have any real backyard and uh, actually you really got three street frontages in essence, so. And part portion of the deck is, is conforming in terms of the setbacks anyways. It's just one corner that gets pretty close. And still it's 23 feet, so. And that's to the road layout and not necessarily the pavement as well. So I think it's a fairly minimal request on a difficult lot to work with, uh, to get just outside space, uh, anyways, it's not living space as well. So I, uh, I have no issue with the, uh, with the application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frapery.
It seems like it's going to be fairly reasonable too, but the deck, is it going to be even with the bottom of the first floor? Is that in essence what it's going to be? So the four feet off the ground just makes it even, so they walk-
There's an existing room that's about four feet off the ground and there's a landing there now, so it's really expanding that landing out.
Right, okay. And you have a new fence I saw right there anyway. You just, just put that in recently, I guess.
Yes.
Which will be in back of it, so. From a privacy perspective review, so I don't really have any other questions.
Well, did you receive the assessors' plan? It's the funniest thing, your, your, you know, your meets and bounds appear to be burdened by Hastings Ave being drawn over. Is that on the ground?
I don't understand what you're-
Actually, I think that's the, the vision maps, uh, Mr. Chairman.
This isn't the assessors?
Well, no, that's, that's from Vision Inc. and, and they are satellite maps and they are very incorrect.
Oh, okay. I was wondering if they were going to bring the road right into your front door.
Well, in that case, I have to make the deck a little higher.
It says new 16 by 16 sunroom addition on a site plan, foundation as-built plan. Is that to be constructed or has it been-
That's existing, yeah.
And so that the porch is coming right off of that. And you know, we've encountered these corner bird, lots burdened by two fronts. And many instances, people don't have a choice but to come before us because where the heck is your front door, you know? Where is it? But just out of curiosity.
On McNamara.
On the McNamara Ave side.
Okay, that makes sense, sure. And that McNamara appears to not be fully developed to its layout if the satellite map is true.
Yeah.
But in any event, uh, you seem to be certainly-
Yeah, you see, you see those are often way off.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, let's just go with what we have. Uh, you seem to certainly have planned this very well so that you'd get the maximum, you know, maximum distance from Hastings Ave. And it being your backyard, I don't see any alternative location for it. Uh, it's, since it's a side, a side setback, we historically have dealt with this as a special permit. And, uh, I think that's what we, I'm, I'm expecting a motion to be tonight. That will also require you to ask us to withdraw your second request for relief, but without prejudice.
The variance? Yeah. Okay.
So does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please raise your hand. Come to the lectern, seeing none. Does anybody in our audience care to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Does anybody in our digital audience care to speak either in favor or in opposition to this petition? If so, kindly raise your electronic hand and we'll invite you in. And seeing none, we now close it to the public input to the petition. And, uh, isn't it nice to have a night when none of these things are too controversial? So there are 30 people out there trying to get their hands raised. So, uh, we now close it to public input and we open it up to board discussion and deliberations. We're going to go with you, Mr. Frapery. What are your thoughts?
It's a very odd shaped lot. I think it's a very reasonable request, so, um, I, uh, I think it's, it's fine.
And how about you there, Mr. Martin?
Same thing. It's, uh, we're in the unusual shape of the lot and having no normal backyard, so to speak. And the way the roads lay out there and so forth, and there's still, still a good setback, I, uh, I feel that it's a very reasonable request.
All right, well. You just give me a second, I'm looking for the usual sheet. I don't know, my hearing aids are in today and every time I move a piece of paper, it sounds like he's screaming at me. I don't see that. The usual, but that's okay. I'm just going to make a note inside the file for now. And, uh, somebody prepared to make a motion?
Uh, I'll move to, uh, accept it, uh, to approve petition 4954 as requested.
And without condition?
Without any conditions.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
On the motion so made and second it, does anybody care to have any discussion before moving along to a vote? And hearing none. Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung has an aye and hopefully you'll get that fourth aye, okay?
So.
I can't imagine you won't because this board is very reasonable about these.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did a good job. Oh, please come right up. The next petition is. We probably should have brought you a cup of coffee from Dunkin' Donuts down there. So you won't fall asleep on your ride home. Could you introduce yourself to the board, please, sir?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Michael Dolan. Uh, I work at the law firm of Brown Rudnick and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, otherwise known to all of us as AT&amp;T. Um, my client, as I believe you know, has licenses to operate a wireless network, telecommunications network throughout the country, including here in the Commonwealth. Uh, AT&amp;T is proposing a small cell antenna installation on a replacement utility pole near 7577 Massachusetts Avenue in order to deal with rapidly increasing demand on its network. Uh, the small cell facility will be mounted on the replacement ever-source utility pole in the public right-of-way. AT&amp;T's RF engineers targeted the proposed location due to high data demands on its network in this part of town. AT&amp;T's existing macro antenna sites, which are their large eight-foot antennas, which you'll see on towers, water tanks and the like, are just not able to provide the coverage that we're looking for in this area of Yarmouth. And this small cell solution was identified as a way to achieve uh, coverage in this targeted area. The facility would consist of a negligible visual impact facility, consisting of an unobtrusive cylindrical pole top-mounted antenna, a small equipment cabinet mounted to the side of the pole and an electric meter shut-off switch and other related equipment. In short, the site will allow AT&amp;T to be able to handle more data at faster speeds and with better and more reliable coverage, which is what everybody wants. As was the approval process with several other previous AT&amp;T small cell facilities in Yarmouth. Uh, we are applying for a special permit under section 408 of the bylaws of the town. And, uh, we appreciate your consideration.
You've never presented any of these before, have you?
I have, I believe. Yeah.
Listen, you did a great job presenting it short and concise and so we understand it. As you know, we have very little we can even offer as input in these. And as you may not know, when counsel appear before the board, I figure my time's valuable too, so will I allow you to write the, a draft decision, okay?
Okay.
So, uh, I, I will deal with my clients while you're drafting the decision for your client. So, uh, does anybody on our board have any questions? We'll start with you, Mr. Martin.
No questions.
Mr. Frapery?
We've been here before.
I did, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Are these just, um, like, uh, meant to feed the main system or are these just small cell, like just a local areas type of thing?
It'll just, we included some coverage maps with our applications and they give a feel for, it's a much smaller footprint than those macro facilities I was mentioning. Uh, so down near the waterfront, um, and you know, in these, in some of these other locations, there, there's a, this is essentially a gap where customers are telling us, hey, we need better coverage here. Uh, and this is a way of targeting that area, providing a antenna facility. It's unobtrusive. We're not proposing a new tower or anything like that. And, uh, thankfully, uh, some of these utility poles can really help out.
I saw that at least one of the poles is already in the ground.
Yep.
I think, uh, and is it ultimately, there's going to be four of them? Is that the idea?
Well, yes, that, that's right. Those coverage maps show two additional ones. Uh, one of which we are, um, probably going to be pursuing a similar approval in the weeks to come. And then the other one may be on that same, uh, time period. We're just working through a couple of, uh, technical things on that one.
Are these for 5G? Is that what they are?
In part, yeah.
Only, they do multiple frequencies? Is that why?
Yes.
And, um, is it, I know there's different bands. Is it mid-band? Is that what it would be considered?
Well, there's, uh, there's CDMA, there's, um, the, and the, and the 5G, um, you know, i- it's the full panoply of, uh, of AT&amp;T bandwidth.
I know some have greater, some 5G have greater distance than others and some are local. That's why I just wondered what-
Yeah, the, the 5G tends to be a little bit smaller footprint for coverage, so.
And just out of curiosity, is this the map you're talking about? The, the blue is what shows the-
Blue is the area that needs coverage, yeah.
This is the area that needs coverage?
Incredible.
Trying to figure out which is which.
Yeah, sure. I'm sure I'm looking at-
No.
What's the heading on that one?
It says proposed AT&amp;T coverage in and around Lewis Bay.
Okay. And, um, you know what? Looks like the colors may have come through a little different on that copy, but, uh, the, the green, which is the blue, is, uh-
That's what it'll look like after they're put in place?
Yep.
Versus now when-
Correct. If you look at, uh-
Yeah, the current one looks like-
The current one, yeah.
That's the current one.
That's right.
All right. That's all I had for questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just curious about the technology.
Yeah.
Well, I don't have any questions. Uh, I want to say you've done a great job presenting it. And I've done a poor job identifying what you're presenting, so. What you are presenting is an application for special permit concerning property located at 77, 75 and 77 Mass Ave. West Yarmouth, Massachusetts, uh, property in an R25 zoning district. And, uh, we now know what, uh, the applicant seeks, a special permit to allow for these additions to the pole and improve everybody's AT&amp;T cellphone, uh, use. Don't bring it to me. No one in our audience apparently is interested to speak in favor or against this petition. So we now, uh, ask anybody in our digital audience if they care to speak in favor or in opposition to this petition. Please raise your hand. And we see none. So as a consequence, we now close it to the public input on petition number 495, uh, 4951. Anybody want to make a motion?
Uh, I'll move to-
Make notes.
Accept petition 4951 as, as we, as requested.
All right, and, uh, any second?
Without, without conditions.
Yes, thank you. And a second by Mr. Frapery. F-R-A-P. R-I-E. And, and DeYoung, it's okay if you call it D-old. I've had that before. All right. So, uh, on that motion, does the board care to have any discussion, uh, before proceeding to a vote? And hearing none, all those in favor, please. Oh. Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung has an aye. And, uh, the vote will not be complete until somebody has certified that they've watched this meeting and has voted in favor or against. Assuming it's in favor, which I would anticipate because we always approve these. That would then become a, a granted special permit. That special permit, uh, which, for which I look to, forward to the draft, will be presented to the town clerk. 20 days must lapse before that's considered a final. Uh, and that's a technical waiting period, as you know. I don't anticipate anybody appealing from this. And so, uh, that then has to go to the Barnstall Registry of Deeds to be recorded with proof of it, that it was recorded, brought back to our board. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, before we forget, I'm not sure we did the, uh, got rid of the, uh, the variance on that last one.
Oh, well, the fellow's left now.
He didn't want to take it out.
Yes, he did, yeah. He said that he was in agreement that it, uh, so, well, let's just finish with this and then we'll separately vote on that.
One question about the fourth vote. Do you not see that being consummated until the next meeting? Or could he do that in the interim? Just trying to understand the timing of when you'd like to-
Yeah, our next meeting is in two weeks. You want to proceed with construction? Is that it?
No, 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 no. It's not like that. I was just curious of the timing.
It will be on the agenda, the first matter on the agenda for the next week. And that's only to announce the vote in a public setting.
Okay, thank you.
I don't feel comfortable with him voting via email and telling us his vote.
Thank you.
Him or her? Okay, thank you. Uh, so you have a 3-0 vote, awaiting the 4-0 vote. And you have another petition, that's 4952?
Yes.
Let me just identify for the people at home. It's concerning property near 7 and 11 Grove Street, West Yarmouth, Mass. In zoning district R25. And again, our applicant seeks a special permit under 408 of our bylaws and 103.2 together with use table 202.5 Subparagraph F7 for the construction, operation and maintenance of small cell wireless equipment, which will be attached to an existing utility pole in the public right-of-way. Good evening again, sir. Please identify yourself.
Sure. Michael Dolan, uh, on behalf of the applicant AT&amp;T from the law firm of Brown Rudnick. My client is seeking a, uh, special permit for a small cell antenna facility on an existing pole, uh, as referenced, near 11 Grove Street. And uh, facility is designed to provide coverage to an area, uh, in which my client is not, uh, able to provide its desired coverage and, uh, we believe this will, uh, help us achieve filling that gap in coverage.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, Mr. Martin, any questions of our petition?
Nope, no questions.
Mr. Frapery, any questions of our petition?
Just one question. Would you be putting any of these, by the way, up in Yarmouth port? Just out of curiosity.
Can you get closer to his house, please?
Yeah. Give me the address. I know, I don't have any other questions.
He'll be happy to sacrifice the pole next to his house.
Good answer.
You know, everybody seems to be working so hard to improve cell quality here. And I, I don't know, I, I bet Mr. Martin remembers back, I'm not sure Mr. Frapery will, that when you got to exit six and you came, uh, over the hill, you lost your reception, immediately lost your signal. And it, it was that way for quite a while. So I'm glad to see that we're getting- So I'm glad to see that we're getting pseudo-flagpoles and well-designed equipment that is a non-intensive to people, but yet enhances our signals very well, so.
Would this also be providing the home, home internet? Is that the idea over time with these?
Well, to the extent that your connection, like you would anywhere, you can get, it would not provide Wi-Fi.
No, not Wi-Fi, but...
No, it would just be a stronger internet connection, so you could have the equivalent.
AT&amp;T is advertising, I think, some of the home, the home internet systems, you just put a box, you put the...
That would be, that would be different.
That would be, yeah. I thought maybe these poles were providing that.
Well, to the extent there's connectivity between those and the poles, there could be. But, you know, that type of equipment you'd need in your house, which is separate.
Understood that. I just, I didn't know if that was the intent of providing it.
No, no, these are for...
For cell phones.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody in our audience care to speak in favor or in opposition to the petition? Please come to the lectern. Seeing none, is anybody in our digital audience at home care to speak in favor or against this petition? Please raise your hand. Madam Administrator?
I do not see a hand raised.
All right, so we now close it to public input, open it up to board discussion deliberations. And these are pretty straightforward things. I think we welcome all of these applications coming in. And there should be some more streamlined way to deal with these, but we don't, as you know, have a zoning commissioner. So as we, therefore, need to have him come in. Perhaps I'll get, you know, elected or paid to be the zoning commissioner in the future. Might be a fun part-time job. Mr. Martin?
I'm fine with it, as with all the others.
Mr. Frapery?
Same.
So, Mr. Frapery, we're gonna change the vote, I bet, I bet tonight. I bet Mr. Frapery's gonna move.
I move to approve as presented. The special permit.
And I will second it.
And so we have a motion made by Mr. Frapery, seconded by Mr. Martin, to approve the special permit as requested and without condition. On a roll call vote, we have Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung has an aye, and we'll therefore announce a fourth vote, a member vote, soon. We are going to be a constituted board of five regular members, and that's coming in the future, and we're looking forward to it, aren't we?
How do you define the future?
Well, we just, he was just appointed by the Board of Slick.
So do you think in your next meeting, you'll have five?
Hopefully.
Wow, that's great.
I mean, it's nice with, it's nice with four, nice with five. It really doesn't change things, except for the petitioners who need a 4-0 vote, or a 4-1 vote. So if we're only four people, you gotta have an unanimous vote.
I think they have to come, I think they have to come to two meetings before they can vote.
Yeah, so in any event, thank you very much. I look forward to the draft.
I think I'll see you all again.
Thank you.
You'll send the decision, draft decision, to our board administrator, and she will then forward it on to me, okay?
Yeah, or I can get you my card.
Oh, great.
Please drive safely going home. I do have some more business, however, to deal with. And that's a housing assistance memo that has been presented, April 19, 2022. It's from Rami Maiman, and she indicates as follows. As you know, Housing Assistance Corp., known as HAC, is serving as the monitoring agent for several affordable developments in Yarmouth. As monitoring agent, HAC is responsible for ensuring the ongoing compliance by affordable unit owners with the terms of their affordable housing restriction, including requests for refining, refinancing, excuse me, capital improvements and resale. This letter is to update you on the status of the affordable units in Yarmouth for which HAC acts as... HAC acts, who is that one? That came out too fast, and as monitoring agent. Below is a chat, which breaks down any new updates for 2021, and I'll read them into the record. This concerns Mill Pond Village. There are 12 affordable units in that property. One has been resold, and one has been refinanced. And we thank HAC for providing that updated information on how we're doing with our effort to achieve 10% affordable housing in our town. And with that, we move to adjourn, and so we are adjourned.
You do it.
We don't even have four. I mean, we gotta get four together.
Yeah, we can't do that.